To America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you everyone. Just a little note here, Governor Baker signed a bill into law on June 16, 2021, allowing public bodies to hold remote meetings through April 22 here, but it has been extended to July 15 of 2022. So, members of the public can access the meeting via our Holyoke Public Schools website. Also pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. With that being said, we're going to go ahead and start with student showcase. Do we have anyone here for student showcase?
There's no student showcase today.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, is there any public comment? No public comment, and I don't see anyone on the attendees' side either for comment. Moving on to communications and reports, student reports. Do we have the Holyoke High School North Campus Representative here with us tonight? Ms. Wilson?
So I noticed someone's looking to be assigned as an interpreter as well, so I don't know if we should pause the meeting until that person... I'm not sure if they've been assigned.
Okay.
It's all set, thank you. I just got another message saying it's being interpreted, I apologize.
Great, thank you. I guess we do not have... It's not all set, I do need to... Okay. So, let's hold off for a minute, let's get this completed. Can we please have Ms. Katie Moonen assigned to be the interpreter?
We'll have to wait until Sam gets backward.
Okay. We'll just take a quick break.
She just noted that the meeting can continue.
I am going to hold to ensure that there's interpretation. Thank you.
I'm here. Right here, sorry.
I think it's the first school committee meeting of the year, not the last.
We got this, it's all good. All right, so, do we have a Holyoke High School North Representative to give the update, their student report? No? Okay. So we're going to go ahead and move to the Holyoke High School Dean Representative, Mr. Kennedy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Evan Kennedy. I'm a freshman here on the Dean Campus, and today I'm going to talk to you about the updates we have here for our Dean Students. This past month, our senior class of 22 have graduated and are out in the world. This year, we have... This year, we have had the most graduated seniors since 2007. This year, we have had 82 students graduate. At the beginning of the four years, we had 120 students that were accepted into Dean. The rest of the grades are wrapping up our final exams. We have, in our vocational programs, every student takes a related theory, which is like bookwork and written tests, and a skills lab, which is hands-on. For MCAS, 100% of our juniors have already passed their ELA-MCAS, 97% pass on their first attempt. Also, 100% of our juniors have passed their math MCAS, 75% has passed on their first attempt. And all of the other students are looking forward to enjoying their summer vacation.
I'm sure they are. Just saying. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Kennedy? No? Great, excellent. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and move on to presentations. We do have the ethnic studies program here to give us an update. Oh, if you just go right up there between Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Garcia.
You have with us Ms. Danielle Hayes.
Do I hold it down? Thanks, Evan. We have a presentation that is, I think, going to be projected? Okay, great, I'll just wait a moment. Thank you all for having me.
Welcome.
Well, it's loading, I'll just say, my name's Danielle Hayes. This is my ninth year as an educator, my fourth year in Holyoke. I'm the... An ethnic studies history teacher, Evan's one of my students. I teach all the freshmen here at the Dean Campus. And this year, I'm the Ethnic Studies Department Head. And so you all might remember, we were here in August, and then throughout the fall advocating for an ethnic studies director position. And I'm here, not because we have figured everything out, but to give you an update at the end of the year about what we have been able to figure out and some open questions that we have, and to make myself available if you have questions for me. So, we have a new position. Superintendent Soto, we want to thank you for your support of ethnic studies. Mr. Soto has said again and again that he is going to ensure that this program continues. This is a homegrown ethnic studies program. We're a model in the state. Boston is starting to just offer ethnic studies classes next fall. And so, to that, there's a new position being created, or that has been created and posted, I think we're in the application and interview process, for a culturally responsive instructional coach. That's a district-wide position. 50% of that position will be devoted to the ethnic studies program, both coaching teachers and supporting with curriculum development in ELA and history classrooms from 7th through 12th grade. This is the first year that we have ethnic studies alumni back in our classrooms as teaching assistants. I've had the good fortune to work with Ms. Chantel Fernandez, who graduated just last spring from North Campus. She's a fantastic TA, supporting our students four days a week here. We also have Zyle Vargas at the North Campus. We were able to secure a $30,000 grant we won from the Novo Foundation to continue this work next year and expand it, so we hope to have additional teaching assistants in both middle school and high school classrooms. We came together from January through June, once a month, with some of our key stakeholders and our district leadership, including Mr. Soto, Dr. Mahoney, Ms. Seneer, to vision forward for ethnic studies program, figure out how we can sustain this program so we're not in triage mode, but we can have a healthy and robust program. Our 11th graders at the North Campus hosted a successful block party. I think some folks here attended, and we appreciate that. We had live music, we had poetry, we had performances, we had games for kids. And then we've had a year of having a spotlight shown on us in a really positive light. We had a Boston Globe Magazine feature article about our ethnic studies program, as well as one in San Francisco. And we've been working hard on a promo video that we'll see just a clip of today, but you'll recognize Mr. Kennedy in it. If you don't mind hitting the next slide for me, thank you. So, there's a... I forwarded the article in its entirety to our school committee, so you have a chance to read it. But I just wanted to highlight the data that we're really excited about. So, controlling for many other factors, professional researchers, researchers who are statisticians know a little bit more about high-level math than I do, found that our ethnic studies graduation rate here in Holyoke is an 11.9% increase. So when you look at 9th graders who took ethnic studies for just one year, and you control for all other demographics, their 8th grade grades, we see a really significant gain in graduation rates. So, we just wanted to highlight that. And you can see Chantel, our teaching assistant, working with one of our 9th graders here at Dean. Do you mind starting at 15 minutes? Yeah, so this is just a little clip of our program. I think it gives a little sense of what we do and why we do it and how we do it. And we will be posting this soon, as soon as we have fully translated subtitles. So, once we have the full version available, we'll share it with you. But we wanted to share out this recently released video.
Just a book away, or just a lesson away, that you really... You sit in an ethnic studies class, and you just learn so much about yourself, about others, about...
Where do you want us to start? 15? Okay.
The community you're in, how to navigate, what it really means to be a human being in this world.
One of the reasons that I love Holyoke so much, and Holyoke ethnic studies so much, is because here, you're seen.
In some spaces, we ask students to sort of, you know, check their baggage at the door. Ethnic studies is a place, I think, that said you could bring all of that in, and we're going to like work with it.
Yeah, like even if you think that you didn't do like a good enough job, or you could have done better, everyone encouraged you and saying that you did the best you could, and that is great.
I just learned that from like my experiences as a student, but also my experiences as being in a teacher role, just learning like how I can show up as somebody who's yes, going to be in that teacher role, but somebody who's also going to be like, okay, I'm here as a human.
Ethnic studies is so important for students at a place like Holyoke High School or Holyoke Public Schools, because it's not just about the academic learning, it's about the socio-emotional learning. You can't separate the two.
It creates room for nourishment, so mental health nourishment, just community nourishment, your family nourishment, your overall being.
Some people think, because we take care of each other in ethnic studies, that the work isn't rigorous and that we aren't learning. Like, some of the most thorough learning I have done is done in ethnic studies classes.
That idea of increased self-discovery for students then has translated to increased leadership among our student body.
Once you're able to see the whole picture, you can see these like police brutality like as a toxic fruit that is poisoning your community. And you can say, we're going to take that fruit, and we're going to get rid of that. And this is how we're going to do it. And that's where things like...
We come together and we make action happen. We see the tree, and we're like, you know, how can we take all these apples away? Like, how can we like take all this poisoned fruit and, you know, make it into this nourishing fruit and make it beautiful? How can we make action steps to... Together, to fix those problems.
Ethnic studies is a way to pull kids in who are not typically invested in education to hopefully grab their attention with something that's familiar to them and, you know, give them something to hold on to so that they can get through school and be more successful as adults.
I would say like around like the third, fourth, beginning of 5th grade, like I just didn't have that drive for school. Like, I tried, but like it wasn't like I... Like, I want to be here, like I want to learn these things. It was more of like, I'm just here to make my parents happy. And when I got introduced into ethnic studies, and I started learning all these different perspectives with what people go through, it like really encouraged me to like want to be there in that space and try to figure out ways to help these people, because like the things you learn in that class, it's so like disturbing, but in a good way, because it opens your eyes. And ever since like that, I kind of got, you know, I got really involved in a lot of things in school, and I... My grades were, and still are, amazing. I get a lot of As and Bs and...
National Honor Society?
Yeah, National Honor Society. Big bucks.
I don't know how I navigated the world before I was introduced to ethnic studies, but ethnic studies has been an exercise in creativity, an exercise in freedom dreaming, and permission to sort of exercise those freedom dreaming muscles in my mind that I didn't even know existed.
So, one of the words that we learned in ethnic studies class is freedom dreaming. Freedom dreaming is this, this way of thinking that no matter where, what situation we're in, we are able to dream a better future. It's like this idea of a road pushing through concrete, because we have that power. If we all come together, we can be able to fight for what we dream for.
It doesn't do much if we just show them how things are broken, and not a pathway to rebuilding, or to recreating, or to fixing, or repairing not just their school, but the world around them.
This is the long-term for Holyoke, right? And it may be a long-term challenge, but I think that that's something that hopefully, whatever leaders come into the district and people around the community see this as about supporting youth. We have to envision a country, you know, in decades from now, and they're all right here around us, running around on our knees in ways, little children, right? And so how is school going to be a space to move us all forward?
Last thing, where you go, if you could describe ethnic studies in one word?
Oh, yeah. When I look at ethnic studies, the images that come to my mind is just all the people, the village that is committed to this work. Students, educators, partners, it's all of that. It's all the people, it's all the people. And I cannot think about ethnic studies without all those dimensions. So it's hard for me to just reduce all of that in one word. So that is... My answer is no one word.
Thank you all for the time to share a bit of that. So I just wanted, you know, say that it is really like tempting in public to affirm everything that is going well, and to not be honest about all the things that have been hard about this year, and many of which I'm sure, because you're working in schools or with school people, or in students, and parents, you know our challenges. And so I just, yeah, want to name that it's our program and our teachers, like many educators across the district, across the country, are really struggling. We are in triage mode. As a leader of this program, I wish I could say I could do all the things that I was called on to do in this role, and I couldn't. You know, I was teaching over 100 students a day and trying to do what had been a full-time administrative role. And so I really feel heartened to hear Superintendent Soto's commitment and the district's commitment to this work. And I feel hopeful, thinking about how this program can grow and expand and continue to evolve as students and teachers shape it. And just also want to name that when we stretch our adults too thin, that the integrity of their work and their well-being, and therefore the students' well-being is also impacted. I am resigning at the end of this school year, and it is in large part because of that desire to do what I, what I can well, and to feel that that wasn't possible in this role. And I really want to set up the folks that are stepping into this role to be successful. So I really feel grateful to have this coaching role, and that I think that we are going to be starting that next school year with more capacity to support our teachers, and I hope we can sustain that. I'd be happy to answer any questions that folks have. I think the kind of big questions that I want to leave us with are, how will we recruit and support and sustain truly anti-racist educators, not just in ethnic studies, but as Anthony and Steve have pushed us to ask, across all grade levels and disciplines? How will we create spaces where we don't see young people's voices as a threat to adult authority, but as truly essential to the conversation? And how will we invest in this homegrown ethnic studies program that has the potential to be a model across the country? A program that centers students and our city's strengths? And a program that we know the data proves helps students graduate and recognize their brilliance? I was sick of COVID, and so I didn't get to go to graduation this year here at Dean, which was really challenging, because the seniors, this class of 2022, I feel like are my babies. I taught them as freshmen, and many of them as sophomores. Our student body president, Leila Jenkins, who's in the room, spoke at graduation, one of our ethnic studies scholars, as well as our valedictorian, was an ethnic studies scholar. Like, we can see that our program is not empowering young people, it's just holding up a mirror so that they can see their own brilliance. And I hope we can continue to invest in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Collmar?
How do we get this out to the public? This is such a wonderful thing for our students, but the public should know exactly what we're doing in our schools.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, we feel really excited about the Boston Globe article, a Boston Globe Magazine article that went out, and have requested that Jenny share it out with our district in the Friday release. This will also be on YouTube, and we're happy to share it with the district and have them showcase it. They've been a partner in making the video happen. But we welcome your ideas about how to amplify that work.
Yeah, I could just say, we will be posting this video on our website as well. The challenge with the Boston Globe article is that it's behind a paywall. So like, we could post it up there, but if you don't have a Boston Globe subscription, you won't be able to access it. And that's, you know, pretty inequitable to a lot of our families that... You know, I don't have a Boston Globe paid subscription, so we're trying to work with the Boston Globe. We've reached out to them to see if they're able to like allow us to like PDF it, or do something different, and give us permissions to be able to share it. That's what Jenny's been working on with them.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Soto.
I don't have any questions, I just want to thank Danielle for coming, and thank everybody that's involved. And I can't forget thanking Dana Altshuler, who's here in the crowd. She's, you know, poured her heart and soul into helping create this great program and this great opportunity for our students, you know. For some of our students, it's ethnic studies; for some of them, it's sports; for some of them, it's the drama club. But we want to create as many of these opportunities that engages our students in a way that they otherwise wouldn't be engaged. But I did want to recognize Dana for all her hard work over the years in getting us to a point to where we're at right now, and all of our ethnic studies teachers. And I continue to reiterate that I'm committed to continuing to invest in this program and sustain it. I share a lot of the same concerns that Ms. Hayes laid out, not just in ethnic studies, but in general. We talked about, you know, all of our teachers feeling, you know, overwhelmed this year especially. We talked about, at the last school committee meeting, where we had a hiring fair for where we normally get 100 teachers, and eight showed up. We had a hiring fair with Teach Western Mass in Springfield in collaboration with Springfield Public Schools in the Empowerment Zone, where hundreds and hundreds of teachers usually show up, and only 18 showed up. So, I share a lot of the concerns, like where the funding is there. You know, we just passed, we just had a public hearing on our budget. Funding is there. I am very much concerned with the workforce in general. There's a lot of people across the nation just running away from the profession of education. And I hope that that trend is reversed at some point. But I just, I share a lot of the same concerns. But I know that we're committed as a district to continuing this program and continuing to watch it grow, and make sure that our students have these opportunities.
Do we have a vote to allow Haley to leave?
No. Okay, Mr. and Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. I'm not sure what your preferred title is, so I'm just going to call you Danielle. Okay? So I did read the article, and, you know, when you see that statistically significant increase in graduates, it intrigues me. It intrigues me significantly to find out more about what's going on. I'm familiar, but not familiar enough with the program. So, you know, thank you for that. Thank you for, you know, all the four years that you've given to Holyoke Public Schools. Leaving Holyoke is never an easy decision, so I want to thank you for your service, and I'm sure the students and many other staff members are going to miss you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Are there any further questions or comments?
So thank you, Danielle, for everything. I sure would like to hear from Mr. Kennedy, the perspective on that of a student that is currently in the program. What's your take? How has it helped you in this study?
The ethnic studies curriculum has had a huge impact on all the students. It really helps you understand different perspectives, not only your own. And with the amazing team, the teachers, the students around you, it truly is a tremendous, a very, a very good learning environment. That is a huge asset to anyone. And it has been a, it's been really great having the ethnic studies curriculum in our schools. I have, I have really enjoyed it myself.
Thank you so much. So what I am going to say, I think I do remember, Ms. Jenkins, your line in your graduation speech was, "Never forget where you come from," correct? That was very powerful, and I like that. One thing that I did like throughout this video is that for many, this was a purpose, right? For some of us, we engage more when we find purpose. And it's purpose to change something that's affected us in our own lives, right? And I saw that throughout this video. And it's really important to maintain a program where we're educating all students across the board. What are some of the systemic barriers, right, that cause institutional racism, causes all the inequities within any district, right? Here in Holyoke, it would be the inequities with special education, our students with disabilities. It would be the inequities with our students who are English language learners. It would be the inequities for our economically disadvantaged. It's also the inequity of our minority population, right? So, how do we build that? And so that then becomes the empathy part of those who do not get that inequity, right? And that we'll be working together with those that are affected to make that change. So I thank you for what you're doing with this program. We hope that it continues to flourish and grow, and that other districts, I know this is a national thing that is happening, where people want to look at ethnic studies and incorporating it. It's not a mandate to have it or to make students take it. It's offered as an elective. But hopefully, as they see the impact that it may have, things could change. So, thank you.
Could I add one thing? Chantel, my teaching assistant, brought an article to my attention that maybe many of you all know. I was three years old when it came out, so I didn't. But it's 1991, there's a study of Holyoke Public Schools by Sonia Nieto about some of the causes for graduation, the kind of push-out or dropout rates of Puerto Rican students specifically, and of our graduation rates. And reading it kind of gave me the chills, because while we've made really great progress on some of those fronts, some of those things you could read, and it was like it was written yesterday. So, Chantel recommended that I give you all homework and ask you to read it. And I said, "I don't know if I really have the power to do that, but I'll try," right? My final week as a teacher. And so I'd be happy to share that PDF with you. I didn't have a chance to send it to Sam at the meeting, but I'd be happy to share it. Many of you might already know it, so I apologize if you do. But if not, it is striking to see 30 years later how much of those recommendations would still be helpful for us. And I'll still be in Holyoke, I'll be with Palante, so I'm sure I'll see many of you. Thank you.
Well, I wrote it down, so please do send it to us, because we do have our retreats. And again, when we're looking at this strategic plan that we're going to be talking about soon, and really improving the education for all of our students here in Holyoke, these are some of the things that'll help us. The knowledge to know what was in the past, so that we don't recreate the same thing. I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you. Nice to see you again. So we're going to go ahead and move on with the superintendent receiver report, starting with strategic plan update.
Yeah, so tonight, we wanted to... What we want to do is release our, a soft release of our strategic plan, starting tonight, starting tomorrow. So, each of you have, has had a copy handed out to you tonight. And I'd like to move to Slide 3. The name of the plan is "Moving Forward Together." And, you know, as part of this process, we worked with well over 1,200 people in terms of getting feedback. So, you know, we think that this is a plan by Holyokeers, with Holyokeers, for Holyokeers. So, this, I've been pretty adamant with everyone that I didn't want to create an Anthony Soto plan. I don't think that does any type of... I don't think that does any type of justice to, to Holyoke at all. Like, um, it's, it's really a plan that, that involved so much input from different, uh, staff members in terms of what we needed. And, um, so I wanted to share, uh, another quote. I don't know who said this, but, um, nothing about us, without us, is for us. Um, and I think that speaks to, to our approach to developing this, this strategic plan for sure. Um, so here's one of the, the key things that, that, that changed. Uh, you know, when we first, uh, uh, after the entry plan findings report, um, we, we just, we basically created an advisory committee of about forty people. Um, that's teachers, counselors, uh, teachers in different grade spans, paraprofessionals, uh, parents, students, just different people. Um, and we looked at our, our current, uh, vision of, you know, being Holyoke's first choice for families and the slogan, a pathway for every student. And we asked, um, we asked people to go up and take a sticky note and say, should we keep this or should we change it? Thirty-nine out of forty people put their sticky on, we should change this. This isn't who we are right now. Uh, a pathway for every student and being Holyoke's first choice for families was probably where we were five or six years ago, but that's not where we are right now. Um, a lot of people's feedback was that, that felt a lot like what's happening at the high schools, but they didn't see K to eights represented in that tagline of a pathway for every student. It felt a lot like, oh, the dual language program and the academies at the high school. But like, as a, you know, as a student that's not in the dual language program or in the academies, like, what does that mean for me? Um, so we worked really hard and one of the biggest changes that we have in, in our strategic plan moving forward is that that's not our slogan anymore, pathway for every student. Um, and, and it's juntos podemos, together we can. Um, again, that's not something that I came up with. It's something that we, we had plenty, a lot of people vote on and, and like throw out ideas on, on what we could, what should be Holyoke's, um, uh, what should we replace a pathway for every student? And this is what we settled on. And I just think it speaks to, again, the, the inclusive process that we went through in our approach, um, moving forward. We really, we recognize that we really have to partner with the community and partner with families and that we have to lift this, this, uh, this district together. I think, uh, six years ago, when receivership first came in, there was, there is that re- like, it didn't feel like, uh, y- you know, there wasn't this desire to do it together. But I feel like this community is ready now, um, and I, I think families are ready now. I think, uh, you know, locally, our mayor, everybody's ready to, to really get involved and, and do this work together and just do what's, what's good for, for Holyoke Public Schools and our students and families. Um, on the next slide, I, I, I just reiterate, that's a horrible picture, by the way. There's plenty of horrible pictures in this. Uh, uh, I, I just wanna reiterate, the, the level of involvement. Um, we've had over fifteen hundred people contribute to this process. Um, and at the beginning of the year, I went through an entry plan process where I went to different schools, I spoke, I sat down with students, I sat down with staff members. And we, we just had an open conversation that was guided by like, what's working well in Holyoke? What needs to be improved and what suggestions do you have for the future? Um, and then, and, and in my, as part of that, we, we released an entry plan findings report that listed, that basically gathered all of that feedback that we got during that process. And we use that to develop the strategic plan that you have in front of you. Um, this next slide, you can see what our new, what our vision is, what our mission is, and what our core beliefs are. So at Holyoke Public Schools, our vision is HPS is a high performing school system where students reach their full potential, educators inspire, families are partners, and the community thrives. And our mission at Holyoke Public Schools is through an equitable, high quality education and trusting relationships, all Holyoke students develop the skills and access the opportunities to graduate high school, ready for life, career, and college. This was a lot of work. We've had, uh, I wanna say, it, just advisory committee alone and the steering committee, we had over twenty meetings or, uh, fifteen meetings. But, um, a lot of work to land on, on what this vision is and what this mission is. So I'm really happy, um, that this is where we landed in our core beliefs. Um, you, you seen some of these in my own entry planning, these were some of my own core beliefs. Uh, first one being that students are at the center of everything we do. I think that if we lead with that thinking, if we start there, we shouldn't go wrong. Like, everything we do is in support of students. That might mean that, you know, uh, uh, decisions might not necessarily be popular with adults. But at the core of it, just know that everything we do, students are at the center of it. Um, I also have, we also have a core belief here in Holyoke that every student can and will learn. Uh, we cannot have this pobrecito mentality that I talked about early on, like, oh, poor kids, they have it so tough at home or this or that, like, no. We have to take responsibility as educators for all of our students, regardless of what background they come from, regardless of what economic student, uh, uh, status they're in. Um, we have a core belief that every student can learn if given the right, uh, supports. We also believe that school is a, a joyful place of discovery, support, and belonging. Um, you know, we need to make our school environments a place where students want to be. Uh, another core belief is students and staff hold high expectations of themselves and of each other. Um, I think that's one of the biggest trends that I've seen in many of the walkthroughs that we've done is not having high expectations. The tasks that we're putting in front of kids, um, is, is not rigorous enough. Um, and I think that stems from a core belief that, that they're not able to do it. And we need to reverse that. We need to, I honestly, my, one of my core beliefs is if we teach them here where we need to teach them, they'll rise to the occasion. Another core belief that we have is that trusting relationships lead to successful partnerships and that our equity commitments are enacted in our daily work. Moving on to equity commitments, I know that we, this is something we've been working on for the last, you know, we've been working on for the last few years for sure. Um, and, uh, we took the opportunity, uh, since we had the, the, the advisory committee and the steering committee, we had, we took the opportunity to revise these. And, um, you know, this is what we, what we ended up with. Uh, we ensure that the students' families and staff get the support they need to be successful. We seek out and incorporate the voices of those impacted with a commitment to include those who have been excluded in the past. We promote access and inclusion for all students, staff, and families. We respect, we respect, embrace, and honor the diversity of our students, families, staff, and community. We reflect on our own behavior to minimize harm to others. Uh, we intentionally build a community that is anti-racist, inclusive, and culturally responsive. And we create a culture of acceptance and empathy so that everyone feels valued and is able to contrib- contribute to our community's success. Next slide here and, and, and what you have are some of our strategic goals. Um, you know, again, this was developed with, with the feedback from, from a lot of our staff and a lot of our students and, and families. Um, you know, we know we need to increase, uh, the amount of students that are performing at or above grade level, we, uh, in reading and math, especially on STAR. Uh, we presented those, those details at, uh, the previous school committee meeting or the one before that. Um, and, and we know that, that this is something we need to certainly elevate. Uh, increase, we gotta increase the number of students with accelerated growth in reading and math. We have to increase students who are English learners and students with disabilities. Make sure they're gaining one point two five years of grade level growth in reading and math. Uh, we have to increase, have to, we have to have an increase in students making progress towards English language proficiency through, uh, that's measured through our access tests. Um, I don't wanna read through all of them, you have, have them there in front of you. Um, and we will be releasing, releasing all of these, uh, to the public to- tomorrow. Um, again, some of our, some of our focus areas, uh, we know, uh, uh, we have a core belief here that if you solve early literacy and you're, you're able to get students to read by third grade, it's gonna have an impact on, on everything else they do. It's gonna have an impact on their math, it's gonna have an impact on how they do on science. But we have to start there, we have to have a focus there. I know that this is cliche, you know, many districts say this. But, um, I can tell you that, that we are not just saying it. We're dedicating resources to be able to support that. You know, it's gonna change the way we, we do professional development for our pre-K to three teachers. It's gonna, and it's gonna involve getting partners to help us lift the work, um, partners that have had success in doing it in other districts. Um, and this important, the, and, and I just think that if we're able to accomplish this alone, it's gonna have a, a huge impact on, on everything else. And within this, this strategy, there's a, a few different plans. Um, I, there's three of them listed here. We have a, a ton of different, um, you know, underneath each strategy, we have a ton of different, um, basically project plans that we have to, that we're working through right now. We've been having, uh, two hour working sessions every, every week. Um, I've been dedicating our cabinet meetings to working with individuals. Um, we've involved principals, we've involved teachers to, to take a look at all of these different strategies that we have and create action plans for them. Um, normally, or, or I think historically, we would be doing this work in October, but we're committed as a leadership team to, to do it in, over the course of the summer so that we start the school year with all of these project plans ironed out. Um, learning, uh, learning experiences, uh, we, we need to, under that strategy, it's, it's about ensuring that, that schools provide regular, rigorous culturally responsive instruction in all content areas. Um, and this is important, we know we must, we gotta set the conditions to provide appropriate support um, and ensure that our schools flourish. Uh, that, that goes with deciding how much time is spent on professional development, how much time is spent, you know, even down to the lunches, how much time we give for lunches and recess. And what, uh, you know, making sure that what's being put in front of students is rigorous and, and culturally responsive. We see a lot of that, um, happening. We just talked about ethnic studies and, and, you know, we know that the text that they select is, is culturally responsive. Uh, we need to see a lot of that happening in, in all of our classrooms. And you could see some of the strategies under this, um, are, are reorganizing our school dri- school district to elementary and middle schools, um, looking at our schedules, um, and then aligning our supports. You know, I, I recently, um, reorganized our central office because I recognized that, um, the way we were supporting principals in schools, um, was not ideal. And, 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 um, you know, now I feel like we're better aligned to support our principals and the hard work that they do and our teachers. Um, this is another one, you can see the providing differentiated in classroom supports for some of our, uh, uh, students with diverse learning needs. Um, you can see here, uh, we have to create a district-wide vision for a team-based approach, inclusive practices. Um, we talked about that a little bit in our budget hearing at the last meeting, how, how principals were really just taking their budgets, throwing it away and saying like, how do I want my school to be designed so that we could best support our students? Um, and wanna take that approach, um, and, and eliminate the work that's happening in silos, right? We, we want our ELL teachers and our special ed teachers, working with our regular ed teachers to, to just, uh, work together to figure out what's best for each student and not, and not, um, you know, not, not create this siloed approach to work where this is my student, that's your student, they're all our students. And we wanna, we wanna create environments for, um, and, and teaching practices that support that, that theory. And you see other, uh, a couple of other strategies there as well. The whole child, um, you know, especially responding, uh, after the pandemic, this is something that we all saw. Um, we need to support the whole child and, and provide students the access they need to social, emotional learning, um, mental health supports, and also give them opportunities to explore their passions. We talked earlier about, you know, um, you know, ethnic studies being a place where s- that pulls some students in. For some students, it's the, uh, the theater company at, at Holyoke High, for some it's sports. But we, we wanna create all of those opportunities and find what those passions are for our students so that they can be engaged in their learning. Um, as part of that strategy, we need to develop a cohesive plan to increase access to the quality of SEL learning throughout the school day. This year, I can tell you right now, we, 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 uh, we failed in the implementation of our trail, SEL curriculum. Uh, our approach or our plan was for our counselors to develop that. And we know that SEL doesn't just sit with the counselor, like, it has to be a whole school approach. So we need to increase the amount of opportunities that students have throughout the day, which means they're getting that from their teachers, they're getting that from their counselors, they're getting that when they're in PE, like, everyone should be providing that, that level of support. Um, we gotta connect students with school-based supports and community and, and community providers to meet their mental health needs. And we gotta partner with staff, families, and the community to ensure student experience, positive relationships and mentorship, and have access to the opportunities to explore their interests. Um, that could involve, you know, within that strategy alone, we're, you know, we're looking at instituting a, a mentor, some sort of mentorship program. Um, we've, we've worked with, uh, mass mentors to help give us ideas on how to get something like that off the ground. Uh, but it's more than just, you know, externally creating a mentorship program. We need to make sure that at every school, um, every staff member is ready to support students and that students feel safe. I think we've, we recognize that in our, in our panorama data. I think, um, you know, that, that was something that was really positive. There was a lot of our students feel that they have somebody in their building they can connect with and talk to. But, um, you know, I'd love that number to be a hundred percent. I wanna make sure every student has somebody that they can connect to. And then around educator development, we have, uh, several strategies. Uh, we know that Holyoke educators know and care about our students and families. And, uh, we need to do our best to, to make sure they're, they continue to grow professionally, that they feel supported, and that they make meaningful impact on our students' lives. Um, so we, we've developed a few, uh, a few strategies around, around educator development. Uh, I heard it loud and clear from our teachers, you're asking us to do a lot. Um, we need more time to be able to do it, um, and we need the, the right amount of, of collaboration and planning. So, uh, we need to make sure where, that we develop a plan for, for the next few years that, that, that addresses that. Um, one of the biggest next steps is, um, we're gonna be, uh, continuing. This isn't the final, 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 uh, product. Um, the final product in terms of a strategic plan, we hope to release in August at some point. And that might include the profile of a graduate. Uh, that's a piece of the strategic plan that we haven't worked on yet. Um, and we look forward to working on that. We're gonna have a workshop on Tuesday, July twenty-sixth from ninth, nine to twelve. on Tuesday, July twenty-sixth from ninth, nine to twelve. At Holy Oak High, we encourage anybody who is interested in participating in that to, to sign up. We'll have a link on our website as well. Um, and I just wanted to take the, the time now to just really appreciate the fifteen hundred plus students, families and educators and staff that, uh, that made this possible. Um, you know, the, the thirty-one members of our steering committee and the fourteen members of, uh, the, it's thirty, thirty-one members of our advisory committee and fourteen members of our steering committee. Um, we did have a facilitator and education resource strategy. I wanted to thank them. Um, and again, it's, it really is together we can, juntos podemos. And I, I hope, you know, the the community sees that in this plan and, and that we continue to work on, on together to lift this district up. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Are there any questions? Mr. Willahan.
Thank you for the program. Um, was this, um, reviewed by the state at all, or Commissioner O'Reilly, were they part of the process in terms of, um, making this plan?
They weren't part of the process, but this, this is, thank you for bringing that up. This is under the umbrella of the turnaround plan. So I think if you read the turnaround plan, i- is, it's vast. It's a heavy lift. Like, there's so many things in there. This really, uh, sits underneath the, the turnaround plan. The turnaround plan didn't go away. It still exists. But this takes, uh, a, a much narrower focus and takes important things that are in the turnaround pla- plan. And gives us a way for, gives us, uh, a way for our, for our community to understand what are the, like, some very important things that we need to do, um, that are attainable, uh, to help accomplish what, what's in the turnaround plan. Uh, they have seen it. Um, you know, we, we still are gonna have the turnaround plan. We actually gotta go through a revision of that over the summer. It has to be done by October first, I think by statute. Uh, but it's still sit, you know, this is, this is sitting underneath the umbrella of the turnaround plan. Now, we, we do gotta go through a process of, of updating the turnaround plan because it was, it, there was an extension done to October first. Um, so we have till October first to do that. But I'm glad we went through this process because as part of this process, we got a lot of input and we landed on what I think is the right stuff. And, and it's gonna help us take a look at the existing turnaround plan and revise it in a way that, that like, you know, aligns well with this work that we've, we've done as a community.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
So, you know, a lot of people I've spoken to when we talk about the turnaround plan, um, a lot of my constituents don't understand it from the standpoint, um, they don't see that there is an actual number associated with what we're striving for. Here's a goal. Here's something I can actually pinpoint and strive to. So taking from that with the goals, are there any values associated with the, the increases or decreasing? Are there point values or percentages to, that we actually are striving toward something?
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta look at that annually and we gotta determine what those are on an annual basis. Like, uh, this is a three-year plan. It's not a one-year plan. Um, we, we designed it so that it's a multi-year plan. And, um, the state actually sets our targets. So they're working on, on what those targets are for us and once they do, we'll be able to incorporate that. But we didn't want, you know, independent of, of those targets, we didn't wanna put numbers here. Uh, because we gotta wait for the, the state to, to provide those, those targets for us.
And so when, me being new to this, when are we gonna be getting those values that can be put inside this so I can share those numbers? Because that is the biggest thing I've been hearing from people is there is no, nothing that we can point to saying that we've met this goal, we've achieved this because they're always changing. So there's really no way of showing our growth or our, you know, decrease in whatever.
I mean, I would, I would, I would disagree. I, I understand that there's that perception out. But like, the state sets targets and we release where we're at to those targets every year. Um, so that information is available. They didn't, during the pandemic, they held off on like setting targets in light of what, what has happened. But they do assign a target for like what they want our attendance rate to be. They do assign like a target for what our MCAS scores should be like. They do that on an annual basis and you can see whether we met it or not.
Right. But I guess the point I'm making is that it's not clear to people, that it might be listed somewhere deep down in DUCY's website. But people are not seeing that in an easy, just like being able to find our meeting. It's not easily be, able to be found. We're kind of buried in there. We're, and it kind of appears that we don't want people to have this information. And I don't believe that's the case. So I think we need to get better with publicizing and putting it very clearly what the expectations are for this upcoming year and being very clear if we've met them or not. Owning what we have done as a Holyoke Public School system.
Yeah, and I think what does that is what we call the district report card. It takes all of the states. What, what our, what our statistics were last year, what our goals were, what the state target is, and then what, uh, what we actually did. And we release that every year to the school committee. So we'll make sure that um, that we do that again. Um, that, that, that's something we look at on a quarterly basis and we give the school committee, uh, uh, it's, we, we email you on a quarterly basis and give you an update. And usually that's included if, but when, when the targets aren't ready yet, or they're not available yet, you'll see a blank in terms of what the number is for the year. But I'll make sure that the next time we send it, I'll say, hey, Ellie, this is what you were looking for.
And I also think it's
I do wanna like reiterate, I've heard like people say, I wanna checklist of what's gonna get us out of, that doesn't exist.
Right. And that's
And that's not something that I can provide to you. That's not
No one's saying that you can.
Uh, and I'm not, yeah, I, I, I hope you don't think I'm being defensive. I'm just being, I, I don't wanna confuse the two. There's like, here's our targets, here's where we're at. That's not a, the, the, nowhere did the state say, once you reach this, get out of receivership. That doesn't exist. So I know that that's been frustration of, of many in the public, like, okay, tell us when that checkbox is, is all set and when we're gonna get our receivership. I can't do that. Like, that, that's not something that, that exists. I can show you what our goals are, what our, what the state's target is for us and where we measure up to that. Um, and we can continue to do that through our district scorecard and, and the, the quarterly updates that we provide the school committee. Both the school committee and DUCY.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burks.
I like to think of the strategic plan as basically created for us by us. It's like our own little, it's our own little accountability system. That's basically what we're doing. We're taking the state piece out of this for this. This is created by our families, our staff, our students. And it's created specifically for our district and what we want for our district. Pulling that, you know, honestly, who cares what the state wants? This is what we need. What we know are of our district and what we need. So for me, that, that's how I'm looking at it to understand it very differently. And when I'm, when I'm hearing your question, um, I'm called back into the meeting with, um, the commissioner. And, you know, like, the last two years have put us in such a tailspin, like, there is no mechanism to tell us where we should be. And like, they, they've been honest about that. They said, you know, COVID did us in and, you know, we're, we're trying to figure it out. So they've been honest with that. Um, but, you know, we just have to keep pushing and and using our own tools and our own instincts about what's best for our students and our staff to keep going, moving forward and stop putting so much thought into what the state wants because, you know, truthfully, they, it hasn't been, you know, great for us regardless, doing what they want. So I think it's important that we do this kind of work and we follow our guts and our students and our staff and make the changes internally, um, and do what's right. And not so much what the state says we have to do, but doing the right thing for us. And I think that should be our guide moving forward. And if people really wanna know, like, all those statistics, Anthony's right. It's on, it's on the website. You gotta search for it. Um, not only on ours, but also on the DUCY website. All the information's there when they're looking for the benchmarks. You call DUCY or anybody and they're gonna tell you the same thing. Go look on the website. You wanna compare schools, you wanna compare numbers, you wanna see anything, go on their website and, and find that information. And unfortunately, that's what we can do. Like, I can't, like, I wouldn't be in support of asking Anthony to break down the information further on our website, like, because it's not fair. We're putting more, we're giving, he, every month, he's giving us updates. He's telling us, he's breaking it down. And one thing I hope moving forward that we will do as a district is own more of what we're doing wrong. Like, call it out. Say what it is because that's the best way for us to learn and move forward and also gain the respect of our families. So I think that that's key, but I think Anthony's doing the best that he can with getting the breakdown of information, but some stuff that people gotta have to look it up, you know? People want us to be accountable for the state receivership. You know, go in and look at what, where their issues are, but also understand that they don't have a playbook either. So. But I think, Anthony, you're doing the best you can.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Burks. But I'll say, like, we do have a district scorecard. And we update it quarterly. And like, we're, we plan on updating it for the end of the year. I think a lot of what you're looking for, you won't have to go looking for it. It'll be there. It'll have our MCAS scores, it'll have our attendance rates, it'll have like panorama survey data. There's, if there's things that are not on there, um, you know, I'm sure that it's available somewhere. And we could, you know, we could help.
Ms. Brunel.
Hi, thanks for calling on me. I'm sorry I'm not there with you guys this evening. So I have so many thoughts about this plan and I just wanna start by thanking everyone who's put their time and energy into constructing the plan. I just, I feel like it's such a good time to re-envision education as a whole. You know, the other day I, I came across, um, Michael Moore's documentary he made in twenty seventeen about the education system in Finland. And how they used to rank, you know, at the bottom with the United States and how they completely revisioned their education system and now they're, you know, top in the na- not the nation, but top in the world. And, you know, I just feel like we're constantly trying to improve the same things. We're constantly trying to figure out literacy, trying to figure out math, trying to figure out how to get our kids educated more. You know, the state gave us an extra hour a day. I mean, kids in Finland in grade school go to school only twenty hours a week. They get an hour for lunch. You know, I just wanna harp on and go back to the fact that we need to be educating the whole child. And I know we're talking about educating the whole child, but free time is education. Climbing a tree, investigating insects, um, all of that, you know? So we just need to make school more fun. And remember that these are just babies. We can't be expecting preschoolers and kindergartners to know how to read when they should be just learning their letters. But second to that, you know, it takes a village, right? They used to have a saying, it takes a village to raise a child. Well, it takes a community to support education, to have a quality education. And, you know, to Ellie's point, too many people in this community wanna talk about, well, when are we gonna get out of the receivership? How are we gonna get out of receivership? But what are they doing to help us? What are they doing to ensure that the kids in their community know how to read? What are they doing to ensure that we're properly funded in our education system? What are they doing to ensure that we have the staff that we are gonna need moving forward? The staffing issue is gonna be such a major concern. It's gonna be hard to make gains in the areas that we need to gain. Because this district, this state, this country, well, I'll take the district off it because we are doing our best to provide the pay and the support to our staff that we can, but the state and this country just simply doesn't value educators. Educators should be valued more than doctors because guess who teaches doctors how to be doctors? Educators. So it makes absolutely no sense. So we can have all these wonderful plans. We can put all this work into it, but I just fear that the, the general direction of the education system in this country is gonna continue to fail our youth. So I feel like more community members, more city counselors, more people who just wanna talk about receivership. You know, get involved, volunteer, read to a child, um, you know, homes, you know, we, there's just so much more that every single person can do within a community. It's not just on the district. So it just, it's just, it's just a sad state of education in the country as a whole. And it's, um, it's, it's quite unfortunate.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brunel. So thank you, Mr. Soto, um, for, you know, all the work. Thanks to everyone, um, all the work that they put into this. Um, again, this is ongoing. Um, we will be talking about this again, um, in August. Go ahead, Mr. Columa.
Yeah, I'd just like to find out from Tony, on a state level. I'm gonna go back fifteen years. Okay? And the state came in and started evaluating our city schools. And all of a sudden, they says, now at level one. Level two. Level three. Level four. Level five. And then they decided, well, it's time that we put a receiver in here to, to try to help the city and, and do the right thing. Is there any way that the commissioner can say to us, now, you're not at level five. You, you've done some work and you're at level four. So that the city will know we're, we're improving.
Okay, so
We're not just standing still. Let, let the city know whether we're level four, level three, level, you know, so that everyone, everyone in our community will know we're doing a ju- good job. And the state appreciates what the receivership is doing or whatever the city is doing to improve our education.
Yeah, I'm gonna answer that one. Mr. Soto said, no, we can't, um, be taken into a different level because obviously level five on, um, chronically underperforming means, you know, now there's intervention, right? The state is intervening. So technically, as a district, we, we are not going to be classified differently because then that would mean that we're out of receivership. Okay? What does happen though, if people look at it by school level, um, they could see what level that school was. So if we're gonna talk about when we were being taken into receivership, the two schools that were in level five at the time was Dean and Morgan. Initially, we were taken over with Morgan, okay? That was the only school that was level five. It did not mean that Sullivan, that at that time was level two, was a level five. So if people do wanna see what level each school is at, by all means, it's gonna be on the, on the DUCY website and they would pick according to the school. But when we're being classified as a district, we are a district in receivership. So overall, as a whole, we are level five, underperforming, chronically underperforming. And until we get out of it, out of receivership, we won't, we won't see that change in the number. And so, and I know everybody wants percentage, like, give me a percentage of when my goal is met. Like, if it's eighty percent of students, right? So eighty percent of students graduate. Okay, that's nothing to be cheering about, right? Because then what happens to the other twenty percent? Now, would it be a realistic goal for the state to say a hundred percent of your students have to, have to graduate? No, then it's not realistic and, and it's not attainable for next year, right? So we gotta show strides along the way, right? But it's gotta keep going on an upward curve. May Chester Mitchell, Commissioner Mitchell, rest in peace. But what was his thing? Whatever it was. What was his thing, right? What was the words that he said? What was the words that he said? We, we didn't significantly improve, right? And the word significant improvement is subjective. I could think of it one way. Significant to me might mean that we went a 20% up in something. Significant to that person may have been an 80% up, right? So right now we're working at, and what we all should have been here for, because that's why we're in this position, is we're here for the students. We want to make sure that our students are achieving, they're succeeding, um, in life, in their careers, college, when they move on into college, those that had due or, you know? What do we do to get there? Because there's still a lot of barriers. So what this, what Commissioner Riley wants to see is that our focus is always on the children. It's not on, um, pacifying anybody else. It's about making right for our students in this community. And when we're regressing and when we keep going backwards and we continue building barriers, not just as a school community, but as a community in general, because there's many out there that talk about, oh, we need to get out of receivership and I'm going to do this and I'm, you ain't done nothing. You ain't done nothing other than this. And this ain't going to get you nowhere because we're not putting in for the students. That's what we're here for. So if we continue striving for that, putting them first and breaking down all those barriers and the inequities, and he starts seeing gains and we're not saying that it's got to be an immense gain, then that's when they have confidence that the school committee and the work that they're doing is for the right purpose and that is for the students. I turned myself off. We're going to go ahead and move on to the rezoning update. Uh, Mr. Soto?
Thank you. I guess I have a question. Has anybody not seen this video that's in this room?
I've got the link.
You haven't? Okay. So we will share this video. I got a lot to, I, there's a lot to say. Don't, before you share the video, can I go to the next slide? I want to, I want to acknowledge that we created a rezoning task force and as part of that, that task force, we, we had to decide, um, you know, what, what is it that should guide our process? This is, we talked about this at our retreat. This is going to be one of the most important things that we do in Holyoke, but it's, could also be one of the most like, um, sensitive things that we do. It has a large impact on families, it has a large impact on, on students. So this is something we're going to continue to talk about and we have a task force that's going to help guide the work. They together said, we, we asked everyone, like, what are the most important things for us to consider as guidelines as we move through this process? And this is the list that, that we came up with. And, and there is a survey, uh, linked in this presentation and, and, um, on our website that we, we want to know what are the most important things to you and make sure, um, if there's anything that's missing, that you're able to let us know. So, you know, one of them, and some of these contradict, right? Contradict each other. So like, uh, there's one in here that says minimize transportation costs and have neighborhood schools. Well, that contradicts, um, ensuring that students have equitable access to programs. If we just say, oh, depending on what neighborhood you live in, that's the school you go to. So, uh, but I want to acknowledge that these are the biggest and most important things that the, the, the committee has come up with and we're still looking for feedback from, from school committee, from community, from everybody. So I'd love for you, uh, um, we don't need to take time at this meeting. I wanted to get this part of it out of the way so we could show the video. It, it explains the, the process and the why. But, uh, if, if you have time, please provide us, you know, send, shoot Aaron, Sam, or myself an email on what are the three most important to you and if there's anything missing.
Hi, I'm Anthony Soto, Superintendent of Holyoke Public Schools and a proud graduate of HPS. When I was a student here back in the eighties and nineties, HPS was organized into distinct elementary and middle schools. But then in the early 2000s, our schools were reorganized so that some schools would serve grades K to eight. Of course, there was a lot about school back then that was different from today, but many people I hear from today, students, family, staff, school committee, community members, all agree that it would be great and better to return to separate elementary and middle schools. I think the prior decision to move to K to eight schools contributed to HPS being placed in receivership. While K to eight schools can work in some contexts, they haven't worked well here in Holyoke. Holyoke's move to K to eight schools was driven by a desire to save money on transportation costs without fully considering the full educational impact. Our K to eight schools have caused us to be operationally inefficient and have lessened the quality of education we could provide to our students. Back in 2015, many parents and staff asked us to change back to elementary and middle schools. I was a part of the team that helped study this issue and gathered feedback from the community. I remember meeting with families in the flats and families in Bolden Village and all over the city. And they all wanted, some wanted their 12-year-olds to have more learning opportunities and more independence at school. They wanted their five-year-olds to have appropriate learning spaces for art and music and to be assigned to schools designed for their age. To all of our families then and now, we hear you and now's the time.
Hello, everybody. I'm Joshua Garcia, Holyoke's mayor and chair of the school committee and the school building committee. I'm also the dad of two children in the dual language program at Metcalf School. More than five years ago, I was working with community and school leaders to build two new middle schools to strengthen Holyoke's middle school programming and allow us to return to separate elementary and middle schools. Unfortunately, the public vote for funding those schools didn't pass in 2019, so we've readjusted our plans and we're trying to now build one new middle school within our tax limit. The earliest a new middle school can be built, however, is in 2026. We can't wait that long to rezone our schools. Our dual language program is now in three schools and as those students grow, they need a middle school with room for dual language programming. Metcalf is serving so many students that the Holyoke Public Schools had to rent space and a nearby building to accommodate middle school classrooms. Other schools like PEC and Holyoke STEM and Veritas Prep, soon to be called Holyoke Middle, they have to share school buildings. Meanwhile, some HPS schools are under-enrolled and they have empty classrooms. Smaller schools, while they sound good in theory, they're often inefficient. Depending on enrollment in any given year, some classrooms may have 12 kids while others may have up to 28 kids. Sometimes there aren't enough resources for every child to have access to programs like art or music or the additional support they need in reading or math. In January, the school board unanimously supported Superintendent Soto's recommendation to move to distinct elementary and middle schools by the fall of 2023 and to redraw the school attendance boundaries to accommodate this. I recognize that the work is going to be difficult, but this is urgent and essential if we really want to give every child the education that they deserve.
Hi, I'm Erin Linville, Chief of Strategy for Holyoke Public Schools. I've worked in the district for seven years and I'm the district lead for the rezoning project. If you are confused by how our elementary and middle schools are configured, you are not alone. HPS has nine different grade configurations across 11 schools. For this school year, we have schools that serve pre-K to three, pre-K to four, pre-K to five, grades four to eight, grades five to eight, grade six to eight, pre-K to seven, pre-K to eight, and pre-K to five plus eight. This is clearly not ideal. We need to organize our schools in a more systematic way that supports student learning, educator development, and effective student-family-school partnerships. As we look towards the future, we anticipate that HPS will need six elementary schools, which will serve either grades pre-K to five or K to five, and two to three middle schools. In the short term, we will need three middle schools. And if we get a new middle school built at the PEC site, we will have two middle schools of about 550 students each by 2026.
Hi, I'm Jackie Gleschin, and Executive Director of School Leadership at Holyoke Public Schools. I've worked in Holyoke my entire career. As a child, I attended Holyoke schools and my kids did too. As a district and school leader, I can tell you that our current school structures and small enrollment make it challenging to give every child in Holyoke the support they need to be successful. There are four main reasons why we need to change how our schools are structured.
We need to and want to better prepare students academically and socially. Robust elementary and middle schools must offer high-quality learning experiences. They have to focus on their students' developmental ages and they have to have sufficient resources to ensure student success. I'm the principal of Sullivan, a pre-K eight school, which means my one literacy coach supports literacy development from many teachers working with students at 10 different grade levels. This is insufficient and short-changes our scholars. When a school is able to focus on either elementary or middle school students, but not both, we can do a better job setting up our students for success in high school and beyond.
We want to ensure continuity of programming for dual language and special education. I'm the principal at Dunne U, which is one of Holyoke's schools that offers specialized programs for students with autism. Children in autism programs should be able to stay with their peers from elementary to middle school. HPS must strategically match our enrollment and educational programming within the physical footprint of our school buildings. Then we will maximize inclusion opportunities and provide effective support for all students to learn.
We want to be more equitable. Students in school must have equitable access to resources and opportunity on our path to becoming an anti-racist, inclusive, and culturally responsive district. All middle school students should have the option to study word languages, not just those in the dual language program. And all students in dual language should have access to art, music, and STEM during their school career too.
We need to dedicate our resources to the classroom, not operations. Resources must be spent wisely so we can maximize the impact of our dollars on student learning and support. Investments must be sustainable over time. When we spread students out across too many buildings, the cost of electricity, pest control, custodial services, and other expenses is higher. When we have more students in the same grade level within each building, we can build more effective teacher teams to support students. Teacher teams should include general education, English learner, and special education teachers, and a counselor sometimes too. Making this change to separate elementary and middle schools will help us uphold an important equity commitment. We ensure that students, families, and staff get the support they need to be successful.
We made the decision to move to distinct elementary and middle schools because of broad community input. Now the tough work is ahead. Which schools should become elementary and which schools should become middle? And we have to decide how attendance zones will be redrawn. We want to include our Holyoke community in the process, so we invite you to be a part of our decision-making efforts. We designed an inclusive process because we believe it is important to seek out and incorporate the voices of those impacted with a particular commitment to include those who have been excluded in the past. Please be a part of the process. Together, we can make long-lasting, meaningful change for Holyoke.
That was a good video. Are there any questions regarding Ms. Burks?
You weren't a lot of that video, I'm just saying.
I didn't say, I said, it wasn't going to be.
You, you were the majority of the video.
No, no, no.
But, um, I was actually on the rezoning committee when we did K to eight in neighborhood schools. That's quite the task.
Yeah.
And then from doing that work, I was then put on the appeals board. So it was mind-blowing to me because I saw the actual effect of the decisions that were made, being on the appeals board and what families' issues were, that why they were appealing, um, and how it didn't work for families. It was really mind-blowing because it was all things that we didn't think of when we were in the works, um, of trying to figure out how to separate and where the lines were going to be. It was really hard work, but that I will say was enlightening. So I'm hoping that with this, you're going to come up with a mechanism to, to be able to fix how it affects families that no one thinks of. Because there really are some totally unique situations that came up that, that are going to be important to make sure that we have a way to help these families.
Yeah, I'd love for, um, I'm sure Erin, you have an opportunity, like I'd love to connect you and Erin so she can capture some of those learning experiences that, that you, you have to share from the first time, for sure.
It was definitely, it was interesting and it was hard work and it was, there was no way to make everybody happy, especially with drawing the lines. But, you know, the, the, the stuff that came after the work was really the most mind-blowing pieces. So I just want to make sure that you guys have like a mechanism for the stuff and the effects.
We're, we're not going to be able to make everyone.
Oh, absolutely not.
Like, I hope everybody in this room understands that there's going to be some families that want to stay K to eight because it's easier for them to drop off their kindergartner and their eighth grader in the same school. That's not enough of a reason to, to, to stay in that model, right? Like to, um, so, so there's going to be, you know, some, it's going to be, can't make everybody happy in this process, but I, I stick to our core belief that, that this decision was made together because we think it's good for students. And, and that, that's at the forefront of this decision. We believe it's good for students.
Any other questions, Mr. Colomar?
Excuse me, how, how are we getting out to the public to sell this thing?
Yeah.
Have you or a group of going, going to the Chamber of Commerce, going to the city, city council or other organization, the Rotary Club or something like that? We've got to sell this product so that it's going to work for everyone.
We're doing everything we can, Mr. Colomar. If you have ideas, please shoot them my way. But, uh, you know, I was at the, the, um, merry-go-round the other day. We tried to, to leverage the fact that we already had some families going there for the CPAC end-of-year event. Didn't get as many families as I'd like to see, but, uh, one of the things we're doing differently that hasn't been done before is we're partnering with what we're calling the Holyoke Voices. So we're partnering with, with Nueva Esperanza, with One Holyoke, um, and with Jose Bo, who are deeply connected into this community. And they're helping try to bring people to the table. They're helping trying to get the word out. Like, we're literally, we've literally partnered with them and we're, we're paying the, those organizations to help get the word out. So we're, it's not for a lack of trying. We're, we're really trying hard to, you know, we're all over social media. We got this video that this, that was created. And we, we have opportunities, we're serving families, we got this task force together. And like I said, we're, um, we're partnering with local organizations that already have deep-rooted connections in the community to help get the word out. So, um, if there's others out there that you think, you know, if there's other ways out there that we could be getting the word out, I'd love, uh, for, for any of you to just email me or Sam or Erin and we'd be happy to, to do that because we know how important this is to our community.
Thank you so much. So the rest of the stuff that's in the packet, FYI, middle school grading guidelines, summer school updates, summer eats programs, summer facilities update. Did you guys have any questions on that? No? There's FYI stuff in there. So we're going to go ahead and move on to new business, approval of meeting minutes. We have the March meeting minutes and the April meeting minutes, which I was made aware that we have to make sure that Ms. Wilson is put in as present. So is there a motion to accept the, the meeting minutes from March and April?
Motion to accept.
Second, second head. Okay. Any discussion? Discussion? So we're going to have to do a roll call vote because we have one of our school committee members on the Zoom. So can we please do roll call?
Mayor Garcia? Ms. Fave?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Nancy Williams? Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Yano?
Yes.
Dr. Willahan?
Yes.
Mr. Colomar?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ongoing business, update from subcommittees. I know the policy subcommittees met. Would you like to give an update or what the next step is?
So we met with Liz Lefan from MASC. We started to, really, she broke it down to us. It was like Policies for Dummies. It was great. It was very informative. And I think we're gonna keep meeting to keep learning. And she's picking policies, she's helping us with picking policies that were just recently updated so that we can adopt them as well and look at them. So it was a great meeting. Liz is an unbelievable resource, but it was just really great learning. I will say that.
So, Ms. Burks. I know that you're not gonna be here come August. You are not on the agenda, honey. Because I know if I put you on the agenda, that seat might be empty tonight. So, 'cause she never likes to be acknowledged for anything. So, Ms. Burks, we want to say thank you so much. Look forward. Stop talking Irene, telling her that you wanna hang me. We want to thank you again for all the advocacy, the hard work that you put in, not only starting back with your children, but you took that and all the learning along the way. Because parents with children with special education, we don't know all the answers, but we learn along the way. And trust me, there's many mistakes, but then we learn, right? And then what do we do with that learning? For some, you keep it to yourself. But with Ms. Burks and with others, we share it. Why? Because we don't want those families to struggle the way that we have struggled in life. And with that also is making sure that those students are acknowledged, making sure that those students feel appreciated, that they belong to their community and to their school. And that's something that Ms. Burks, when it comes to the Special Olympics, when it comes to the Transitions Program, when she was the chair of the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, when it had to do with the graduation and when COVID hit, right? That, I almost dropped her daughter as we were trying to hang up sides, but we did it, right? Ms. Burks always made sure that the students were first and that we celebrated them, right? And so if there's someone that I'm gonna always miss, it is Ms. Burks because that's like my go-to person, right? We're always talking about special education on our own personal levels. But she's also Bingo Lady Number Three, which she promised that she would stick around for that. But you are truly gonna be missed. You, your family, because Mr. Burks was very instrumental as well. And when the city, the district gets back at schools, you have to come back because you guys were a great part of it, a huge part of it. From Ms. Burks, Mr. Burks, to you, Mrs. Burks. Thank you so much for your service. We got you a plaque and flowers. Please come up.
Your face is killing me.
I would say I'm gonna miss her, but she has my personal cellphone number, so. I know she's gonna use it.
All right, look at it. Come on. Get up there, Mr. Calamore.
We could take one later. We do it off-site.
We should all stand by the TV. Pull back a little bit, you're a little scary there. Come on, Mr. C. Evan, aren't you part of this group as well? Yes, you are, you are.
You guys are so kind. Everybody in the TV world must be saying that is one discombobulated group of people.
All right, can I say something?
Absolutely.
I know you're expecting it anyway. So leaving Hoyoke was a really hard decision for us. We've lived here, both Dennis and I, our entire lives. As much as I love you all, I didn't love the school committee work. I loved being on the Special Ed PAC. That's where my heart was. Dennis was an amazing school committee member in that that's where he shined. For me, it was the Special Ed PAC. It was going out and meeting the families and helping them come up with resolutions to their issues. It was worrying about the kids that were struggling and making sure that we were meeting their needs in ways that weren't always easy and weren't always conventional. When I started as a parent of a special ed child, I realized quickly that I was scared and I didn't know enough. And I had a wonderful support system. I had a mother-in-law who was a master educator. I had a husband who was a teacher, and I had a great support system. But as a parent, I never felt strong enough to advocate for my child. And the teachers and paraprofessionals in this district throughout all my years and all of the wonderful people I've met are what made me strong. They made me a fighter. One teacher in particular, Mr. Tom Fisher, who is still an HPS employee. God, I'm dating myself, but it was probably 20 years ago. But this man gave my son an opportunity to leave a RISE classroom that I knew wasn't right for him. He was a teacher that welcomed him into his classroom regardless of his disability, and he mainstreamed him, and that started our history and our fight to know that he basically taught us that you see the ability instead of the disability. And that's where my fight really started. So I'm thankful for all of the teachers and educators and paraprofessionals that we've met along the way. But the Special Ed PAC is definitely my heart. And those families are my heart. And making families understand that they do have rights and they do have a voice and they have a seat at the table. So, you know, I'm not really going anywhere. I'm gonna, I'm not leaving. Like, I'm never gonna stop. I'm never gonna stop fighting for our students because they believe it. You know, we might have changed the zip code, but our hearts are always here. They have always been here, they will always be here, and we're a phone call away. So with that said, I thank you all for the opportunity. I thank the constituents of my ward for giving me the opportunity to continue on with Dennis's work. And I will say Dennis's work because he was amazing in this seat and in this position. But as a family, and, you know, my daughter's a teacher at Hoyoke High School currently, like, we're not going away. We're just, we just needed a change and a new chapter. And it was time, and we had a pretty amazing realtor that helped us like change our path and change our dream. And we are appreciative and love all of you very much. So, from the Burks family.
Thank you, Ms. Burks. And I know Ms. Brunel has her hand up, but I'm just gonna say something really quick. So Ms. Burks, as she said, the Special Ed PAC is her thing, right? But I will say, I still remember the day that she became chair. And it was at a meeting at PEC High, at PEC Middle School where, it was Nicole Ashapell there. And who else? Mr., oh my gosh, Dr. Zright. And I went with one of my coworkers, and when they were gonna do the election, I told my friend Tamika, I'm like, you're gonna say Rebecca Burks. So I sat all the way at the other end, all the way, because I knew what she was gonna do. And so when they asked, Tamika raises her hand and says, "I nominate Rebecca Burks for chair," and this is Rebecca. Like, look, and that's why I know that face. I know that face and I know what I'm gonna get myself into. But it was the right decision because she did so much for the Special Ed PAC. Going into those homes, we would drag Dr. Zright, pick him up, and make sure that he met with those families and that the issues for those children were addressed. Ms. Brunel.
Thanks. So sorry, everybody, for helping the beautiful Burks family find a new home, unfortunately, outside of the city of Hoyoke. You know, it wasn't due to lack of effort on their part to try to find one within the boundary lines. But, you know, I can't even begin to echo Mildred's words. I first got to know Dennis on the school board over eight years ago. And I'm grateful for that because not only did I gradually get to know Dennis, then I got to know you, and I got to know your mother-in-law, and just the impact that you guys had. You know, my nephew was fortunate enough to be in Buddy's graduating class at Sullivan School. And I remember that eighth-grade graduation and watching the boys walk across and then watching Buddy all through high school. But helping you guys be able to find a house, like, I've gotten to know your family on a more personal level. I love your children. They are a true testament to your family, your heart, and your mother-in-law and your husband. And I'm just so grateful to say you guys will be missed by not just the school community, but your Ward Four, your Ward Three family, your Hoyoke family would be an understatement. I'm so blessed to have gotten to know you all. And I can't put you on a high enough pedestal for the work you have done for the kids in this community, primarily your children. And you are an amazing woman, and I know that you will continue to be there as a resource for everyone. And I just wish you guys all the best and that amazing new house. And I know that you're gonna create lots of memories there, and we will miss you deeply.
Boy, we ended this meeting on a sob note. Mr. Calamore. Let me get Mr. Calamore and then you, Mr. Romero.
Yeah, Mildred said it right when she talked about Rebecca, I mean, yeah, Mrs. Burke, when she said, "The children come first." And this is the truth. Ever since I've known her and known her whole family, it was always, "The children come first." And that's what I love so much about you.
Mr. C. Mr. Romero.
Well, the first time I ever met you was at PEC as well. Yeah. And honestly, the fire you bring, the passion you bring to the table, it's uncanny. And I'm hoping that whoever fills the seat brings that with them. And I'm hoping that throughout your absence, we can bring the flame as well and advocate for these children just as hard as you do. Thank you for your efforts.
Mr. Willahan and Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna miss you. It was an honor to serve with you and your husband. And I appreciate all that you've done to the city and for our students. And you really made me think of how, I think you've changed the way that I think of our students. Okay, thank you again.
Not fair. You're not allowed to leave. I just started, and I have looked to you for support, which you've always given me. You know, your words of encouragement, you know, when I was running, you know, meant so much to me and means so much to me. Even just to have a little tiny bit of you backing me is just incredible because I know, like everyone has said, it's always about the children. It's always about what we can do for our students. And even when we're doing the best we can, we can always do better. You know, you have that constant intensity of passion for growth, for success, striving for things that people say can't be done. Oh, no, it can be done. You just need to find the way. So I will miss you, but I know how to contact you as well. And I'm just sad that we're not gonna be able to work together formally, as I say that formally, for a longer period of time.
Are there any announcements? Nope. Is there, are we gonna give Rebecca the last opportunity to make the motion to adjourn? Oh, Mr. Kennedy.
I just want to say thank you to everyone, Sabrina Soto, for doing everything that you possibly can for the students. And everyone, this is only my second meeting, but I intend to be back in August and also next year as a student rep. And yeah, thank you for making me feel at home here and welcome in the group. And I will see you in August.
Awesome. Look at that. So, Ms. Burks, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We have multiple. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia. Ms. Fave.
Yes.
Ms. Brunel. No?
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Tensie Williams. Mrs. Burks.
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano.
Yes.
Mr. Willahan.
Yes.
Mr. Calamore.
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson.
Yes.
Great, motion passes unanimously. And everybody have a great summer. Meeting ended at 7:49 PM. See you in August.